I can hear those chimes in the background, which tells me it is 6:00 PM. And we should call the City of Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting to order Tuesday, July 7, 2020 at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Ace Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall. And Devin is in the process of connecting. It looks like he's all set now.
All righty. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
And, okay, Bill moved, Ryan.
I'll second.
Everybody seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have an agenda. And we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance as usual. I will get the view of the flag for you. Got my big purse in the way. Ryan, can you hear me?
I just, I couldn't hear before you broke up on me. That may be my connection.
No. Can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Pledge allegiance to the flag, states of America, and to the public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're all set. We have public comments listed. And do you want to do public comments now? Or should we wait until items come up that people want to comment on? What do you think, Inga?
Well, does anyone have just a general public comment? Or is everyone here from the public to comment during the public hearings that are scheduled? If no one has a general public comment, then let's wait until the public hearings start then.
Okay, let's. So the next item we have is the presentation of the city's 2019 audited financial statement. And we have someone that is going to do the overview of that for us. So I will hand that over to Ms. Hauser. Is that correct?
That's correct. So I'm Monica Hauser from Hawkins-CPA's. I'm the partner in charge of your audit. So I'm going to do just kind of a quick overview of changes from 2018 to 2019. If anybody has questions, please feel free to stop me. I will share my screen so you can kind of see what I'm going through as I'm talking here. So I got, I'm going to look at it on paper and on screen. So we'll see how talented I am here. So I'm going to start by sharing my screen. And we're going to, if you got the books earlier, we're going to go through the summary financial report. So you can see the City of Milton summary financial report for the year ended December 31, 2019. I'm not going to cover every page. Independent auditor's report, I'll just point out here that we do this summary report for council presentation only. It does not have all of the required disclosures like the thick actual financial statement has. So just keep that in mind that this is not really a public document because it doesn't have all of those required disclosures. So then this is the balance sheet. So this is all funds of the city, including water and sewer, and then all of our governmental funds and stormwater. Sorry. So you can see here, total assets were at $41 million compared to $38 million in 2018. And so that was about a $3.2 million increase from here to here. The biggest change is up in this taxes receivable. So we implemented a new governmental accounting standard, or GASB 84, this year. And so that required us to account for the, what we call the old agency fund. So we collect taxes for the county, the tech school, the public school, all of those other agencies. We now record that differently. So that's kind of the biggest change in our assets here. You can see there's kind of increase in capital assets, which we'll talk about here in a little bit. If we look at deferred outflows of resources, this is all related to our pension stuff. It's actuarial study, doesn't really have any, the city doesn't fund anything differently. It's just numbers we get from an actuary and we have to put in the financials. And we jump down into liabilities. You can see the liabilities went from $10,374,000 to $6.9 million. Again, big change here in, due to other governments. So that's that same GASB 84 where we accounted for taxes receivable differently. Now we record these due to other governments differently as well. I'll point out that the long-term debt, so this is our water and sewer debt decreased. And that's just due to the current year payments. If we go down into the equity section, the net position, so going from $20 million to $27 million. I'm going to break out, this is water, sewer, stormwater, and then that portion of GASB 84 for our agency fund. But we're going to talk about the utility funds in a little bit. So that's what makes up the net position. The general fund balance, we're going to focus on that next. You can see we went from $1,618,000 up to a fund balance of $1,785,000. And so it's about $167,000 increase. We're going to talk about the revenues and expenses on the next few pages. But I just want to talk quick on the overall general fund balance. So our unassigned portion of this overall fund balance was $1,470,000. That's really what's kind of available to spend, not restricted for specific purposes. And I do that as a ratio of our current year expenses. And this year, that ratio is 30%. And that's a pretty good number. So there's no magical number, as long as you're not having to short-term borrow for cash flow needs. That's a good thing. I really think anywhere from 25% to 35% is a pretty good number. Of this $1.7 million fund balance, we have $125,000 that we assigned for OPEC benefits. So those are future retiree benefits that we expect to pay here in the next few years. And then if we look at our other fund balances, a few pages back, we have more detail on that. So I won't cover that right now. So we're going to start out, the graph here shows our 2017 to 2019 fund equity. Red is our general fund and blue is the other fund balances. So like I said, we'll see that in a bit. The red, you can see we've had a kind of a slight increase over the years. We've been doing some transfers at year end to kind of keep a handle on that and help control what that ending fund balance is. Next, let's talk revenue for the general fund. So we compare budget to actual, to 2018 actual. So for total revenue, we were over budget, which is a good thing when we're talking revenue, about $142,000, or 2.8%. And a lot of that is in this interest and dividend line. So the interest rates were a little bit better, just got better return on our money this year. We compare the total from 2018 to 2019. We decreased about $160,000. And this was in our transfers line. So last year, we had a transfer to the library fund that we did not have this year. I'm sorry, transfer, talking revenue, transfer from the library fund. Next, we'll talk general fund expenses. You can see the graph is the revenue. I won't read that to you. But general fund expenses, again, we're going to do the same comparison. So total expenses were $4,928,000 compared to a budget of $5,157,000. So we were $229,000 below budget. So pretty accurate. So the city does a good job making sure they're staying within their budget and amending it if need be. And then if we look at 2018 compared to 2019, there's a difference of $919. So very, overall, very comparable from 18 to 2019. And the biggest budget variance is up in this public safety, the police, what we budgeted and what compared to what we spent. So the graph on the next page just shows where our expenditures are going. Here's where we talk about water, sewer, and stormwater. So you can see if we talk water, overall revenue increase of about $12,000 or 0.8%. So very comparable here. Water ended up with a positive increase in net position of $457,000 compared to $589,000 in the prior year. So pretty comparable. In sewer, so I'll remind you, we had a sewer rate increase in May, so mid-year. Our revenues increased about $73,000 or 6.6%. Big, big change here in the capital contributions. So the biggest difference this year is we had TIF 10 did some work and contribute. We have to record that as a capital contribution in our sewer fund. So the TIF did the work, paid for it, and then it's a sewer asset for the lift station. So that gets recorded in capital contributions. And then this, this is really a transfer in because it's not a negative number. And that is TIF expenses that were paid for the sewer as well. Then if you can see the stormwater here, overall, pretty comparable, about a $6,500 increase or 2.4%. The overall change in fund balance, $181,000 compared to $225,000 in the prior year. Pretty comparable there. You can see the graph here shows kind of our, just our operating income, blue being water. The reddish-orange is sewer, and green is stormwater. Next, these are the other funds. So just point out, these are all the other different governmental funds you have and the balances. So we, I'll remind you that we had two TIFs with negative fund balances last year. Those have now reverted to positive balances, so that's a good thing. The only outstanding negative fund balance we have is in the library fund. So just a topic of conversation for the council in the future here. The library fund has an advance to the general fund. And so I think the idea is that they're repaying that as they're collecting some of those outstanding pledges and donations. And so eventually, those are going to be fully paid and kind of dry up. So what the council needs to decide is what are we going to do with that outstanding advance? My guess is, you know, it's probably going to be between $80,000 and $100,000. Maybe that is not going to be collected. So is the general fund going to transfer money to, back to library to pay for that? Or just kind of how we want to handle that? So something, something to think about as we'll need to get, take care of this negative fund balance here in the library in the future. And the last page here is just kind of our overall summary. So we issued an unmodified or clean audit report. So that's the best opinion you can get. Things were fairly stated. General capital assets, you can see we added $598,000 of new capital assets in 2019. Water and sewer added $3,191,000. A lot of this is that lift station that TIF 10 paid for. General long-term debt, overall, the long-term debt decreased about $691,000. So we have an outstanding GO balance of $11,050,000. And you're well below your state statute limit of $21 million. So then I'm just going to talk really quick on the independent honors report with those charged with governance. So this is required communication to the council. It would identify if there was any problems during the audit. We did not have anything. I just want to point out here that our estimates are in here, no big change from last year. And then the journal entries we have to make as part of the audit are in here. So we had six entries this year. So that's very clean. So just kudos to Dan and the staff for making sure that the numbers that he's reporting to the council on a monthly basis are accurate. And he gets things cleaned up good before the audit. So kudos to Dan on that. And then I'll just comment that we did the audit remotely this year due to the whole pandemic issue. And I appreciate all the extra work the staff put in for us to help us get that stuff. They had to scan us a lot of information. So thank you for helping make that work and get this audit done. So that's all I have unless anybody has questions.
Thank you, Monica.
Are there any questions?
I think some of the, I think some of the big takeaways, you know, we're obviously following a financial plan. And I think this just goes to show that it's actually working the way it's intended. We aren't borrowing. You've heard her make comments on, on our debt, debt levels keep going down. And that's really evident by being under 50% of our borrowing capacity. And some of that was early payoff. Remember, we had that special meeting at the end of December to pay off a couple of bank loans. So those numbers could be reflected in these financial statements, so.
Just a quick note, I do have everyone muted right now. So if you do want to speak, we can get you unmuted.
Does anybody from council have any questions or comments? Can you just raise your hand on this one? Devin? No. All right. So we can, thank you so much for coming to our Zoom meeting.
Yes, thank you.
And presenting, and for all the hard work that you did. And we'll go on to our next agenda item then, if there's no questions or comments. All right. Item number six is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Ryan's motioning to approve. Linda is seconding. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. A feature that we've all been waiting for. Item number seven, one of them, since it's double movie night tonight. Public hearing and possible action regarding ordinance number 476 permitting and keeping chickens in residentially zoned districts. So I do want to make a quick comment that I have received several emails, and many of you probably have too, in favor of this ordinance. I have not received any emails against ordinance. That doesn't mean that other folks haven't. So how this works with a public hearing is that I will open the public hearing. And y'all hear me say that, I'm opening the public hearing. And then individuals that want to participate in the public hearing will take turns. If you could limit your comments to three minutes or less. And then talk once, if we can keep it to once. And then after the public hearing, I will close the public hearing. And then the city council will discuss it. And during the public hearing, what the council does is we listen. So we don't really talk back and forth with the public. We just listen to comments. And then if there's questions that need to be asked, we'll write those down. And we'll answer those questions after the public hearing is over. So having said that, I.
Before you begin, could you cut the, the auditor's report so that I can pull up another document that I need?
I don't know what that is.
Whoever put the CPA report up, it blocks any other documents that you can pull up. She left that report up that she pulled in.
Is anyone else seeing the report right now?
No.
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 Okay, so let's, um. Here, let's.
Yeah, anytime I try to close it and get my other report up, it keeps coming in.
Here, I'm just going to try and like.
Try to refresh.
Everyone see a Google screen now?
Yes.
Okay, so let's stop this share. Do you still see the auditor's report?
No.
Okay, so maybe it just needed a.
Refresh.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Yep, so we're all set. Everyone sees the regular Zoom screen now? Good, okay.
All right, perfect. So I'm going to open the public hearing. And Inga, do we have individuals appearing by phone for the chicken public hearing?
Um, the only person by phone right now is Bob Seals. I'm not sure if he's interested in speaking during the public hearing or if he's just here to listen. But there are a number of people logged in through the regular Zoom platform that may be interested in speaking. So I can go through each person who's not a council member or a staff member and ask them if they want to speak?
I think that would be the best way to proceed. So I will hand it over to you, Inga.
So Larry Schultz, I think you're here for the CUP approval, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so did you want to talk about chickens?
No, I love chickens. There's nothing about a chicken that I don't like.
Perfect. And then Joan Thompson, you're the next one on my screen. And I just need, you just need to unmute yourself, yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to make it clear that I'm not a City of Milton resident. Does that eliminate me from being able to speak?
Not at all. If you could just say your first and last name. And this is for everybody that's speaking in the public hearing, first and last name and address. And you are free to comment.
Okay. My name is Joan Thompson. My address is 8710 North Newville Road. I'm interested in the chicken ordinance because we have family members in Milton. But in reading over the ordinance, there were a couple of things that, that made me wonder. And I thought maybe they would be things that would be discussed at the meeting. It says that when you apply for the chicken permit, you need to show up a drawing of the planned coop and run. But it doesn't really give any suggested setbacks or, in looking at the, what other cities have done, they usually have a recommended, kind of a setback from lot lines or fences or other buildings. And there wasn't anything at all about that. So I wondered if that, if the city would make the process easier if there was something at least suggested. And then I wondered about the building permit costs. It looks like in order to build the coop and run, applicants would have to acquire a building permit. And I wondered what that cost would be and whether that would be prohibitive. Because I know that not all cities require a building permit for an outbuilding like a chicken coop. So I'm mostly here to listen, other than those two questions.
Okay, thank you. And I wrote those down, and I'm sure Inga did too. Next.
So the next person I am seeing, Vern Jesse, I assume you're here for the CUP as well? Okay. And Stu, I think, Elifson, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I pretty much have the same question Joan had last there about the building permit. Since the chicken coop is basically less than the size of a doghouse with a fenced enclosure. And I know in the paper, they said that they didn't understand why you'd need a building permit. You don't need one for a doghouse. So that's pretty much my question.
And Stu, just quick, what's your address?
113 North John Paul, Milton.
Okay, and the next person, Carl Thompson?
Yeah, I think, oh, and my address, yeah, Carl Thompson. My address is 633 Parkview Drive. And I guess my comment is, I definitely am in favor of allowing chickens. I would be in favor of more than four. My family eats seven eggs per day at the moment. Chickens are not 100% one egg per day per chicken, so. But I'll take what I can get. And did you have any thoughts, Molly?
Yeah, hi, I'm Molly Thompson. I did, I had a question about the cost of the permit fee as well. And then it says here, but to discuss whether it be one-time or annual fee. My vote is for a one-time fee because it seems like the work being done as far as the city and approval and, you know, that sort of thing is done on the upfront. And we'd like to eat with less money, of course, as we all would, and be more self-sufficient. I think it makes sense to do that one time. And then, did I have one other question? I'm sorry, I. Oh, I just had a question about the location. So the coop or other enclosure must be located in the rear yard and not be within 25 feet of a residential structure on another parcel? Oh, I see, I misread that. Okay. We have a kind of a long skinny lot, as I think a lot of people do. So that was just a concern that I had. But I didn't realize here it's a residential structure. So I think most people would probably be fine. A residential structure does not include like someone else's.
Garage.
Garage or something like that, correct? Am I thinking of that? I'm seeing some nods, okay. So yes, we are very much in favor of this ordinance. We hope it passes, thank you.
And, and you're Molly Thompson? Is that, you, you cut out for a second there?
Yes, Molly Thompson, same as you.
Okay, perfect. So next, Bob Seals, did you want to say anything?
Yes, I'd like to make just a quick comment, kind of a follow-up from the last speaker on the chicken ordinance 476. If you go to Section 6203, Subfigure F, that describes that 25 feet setback from a residential structure on another parcel. I really think this ordinance needs to, in its present form, needs to go back to the drawing board and hash a few things out. You take a nice hot summer day like today, a little humid, and chicken manure can travel a long way because it's so high in ammonia. And I think this is one thing that you really need to take into consideration.
Okay.
Hello?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Did you have any other comments you wanted to make? Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Did, did you have any other comments you wanted to make?
Unfortunately, I didn't know this was coming down tonight, so I just reviewed it very quickly. And, uh, uh, this is one thing that just jumped out at me. And I'm sure there are other things in here that this ordinance probably should go back to the drawing board.
Okay, thank you, Bob, for your comments. Um, the next person I have is Linda Elifson. Did you want to speak as well?
Not really.
Okay, that's fine. Um, and then I. Oh, there we go. Um, Tony, I, I assume you're here for other items as well?
I am. I was also interested in the honeybees, as you know, I have some. Couple feet away from the city limits and I'm hoping that will pass, but nothing on chickens.
Well, we'll let you speak during that public hearing too. We'd love to hear your feedback. Um, let's see. And then Laura McDermott, Dermott?
Yes, yes, I'm here. In regards to the, the chickens, yes, absolutely very favorable, uh, to allowing, uh, chickens, urban chickens for Milton. All surrounding cities, Janesville, Madison, Milwaukee even have urban chickens. It just seems really odd that Milton is not allowed to have them. We have friends that own them. I, I really don't see any detriment to allowing Milton to have urban chickens as well. I know that there are some possible complaints of, of smell, but we are right next to, um, farmers' fields and there's a cow pasture across the street. And I'm telling you, that smell is going to be way worse than a few chickens.
Okay, so I think that is all the members from the public that are on the call right now. Did I miss anybody that wanted to speak?
Maybe I missed it. Did Laura give her address?
Oh, no, Laura, what is your address?
I did not, uh, three-fifty-two Elm Street.
Thank you. Okay, so I think that's everyone from the public then, Anisa.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for, um, your inputs and your thoughts, and we really do appreciate that. We, um, enjoy public engagement and, uh, we are happy to get the emails and to have you, uh, share your thoughts tonight. So I'm gonna turn, close the public hearing now. And we're gonna. And talking. Al, did you have to say, do you want to say something?
I was just gonna say we couldn't hear you. And then I didn't know if you wanted me to answer some of the questions to the best of my ability.
Yep, do you want to go ahead and do that before I get council thoughts?
Whatever you think, you're, you're the chair.
All right, it's my Zoom court here. All right, go, go ahead, Al.
Oh, okay, um, in terms of the setbacks, yeah. The, the only setback requirement we had in the ordinance was to limit it to twenty-five feet from an adjoining residential structure, a home. So, uh, that, that was correct comment about, we would only be concerned about residential structures or principle of residential structures. So twenty-five feet from a garage wouldn't, wouldn't matter or, or any, any other accessory building. So that, but that was the only setback we put in there, and that was somewhat by design to allow kind of greater flexibility on the site for the, for the homeowner, for the person who wants the, the chickens. Certainly could add additional revisions to that, but it would only shrink the, the footprint in which those could be constructed on the site. In terms of the permits, I think that is a good question. And, and I don't know if it was technically even our intent to require a building permit. Uh, I see that it does say building permit, uh, but I'm, but I'm wondering if that was really more of a reference to the actual permit for the, the chicken keeping as opposed to a building permit? Because yes, we would not issue a building permit for a doghouse. Uh, but Howie can certainly jump in on that one. And then in terms of the fees, that's the question that the council would need to answer either tonight or through separate action. A, what would be the, what would be a reasonable fee? And B, uh, would that be a one-time or an annual or a semi-annual or something to that effect? So that question does remain open and, and that would be a decision the council would need to make. But Howie, do you, in terms of the building permit fee as it references, perhaps that word should be struck? Or is there another thought process on it that I'm missing?
You, by resolution, you set fees for each type of building or permit. So you can have that as a zero building permit fee if you want. You might want to have it just so you have records of the address and the setbacks. So that when you fill out your form, you would fill out how far away you are from a house. But when your resolutions, all the building permits are different prices for whatever, like a shed price or a house price per square foot are all different. So even though it says building permit, under your resolution for fees, it can say, you know, chicken coop and it could have five dollars or zero dollars. And building permits are, um, the, one, a one-time fee for all the other permits. So, um, for the residential one, maybe you might want to just, on that one where it said twenty-five feet of a residential structure, you, you might want to say habitable residential structure. Because then that just clears it up that you just know that's where somebody lives or rents or something, so. But, but yeah, the building permit, whether it said just chicken permit or whatever, that's just however you want to charge a fee for that.
Okay, does that cover our questions? All right, perfect. Start with Ryan tonight. Is he still here? Oh, there he is, okay, sorry, I have to look through all these squares to find people. Um, so I'm just gonna always start with Ryan because he might have to leave. Quick, and so, um, Ryan?
I, I actually right now want to hear some of the council members' thoughts first, and then I might chime in afterwards. Is that, I'm still thinking about a little bit, some aspects of it, and just want to hear what other thoughts are first.
Okay, so you just threw my whole, um, order off.
I know.
Um, Devin?
I think it's a great idea. Um, I'm in full support of it.
Thank you, Devin. Larry?
Well, it's, it's a drafter of, uh, an optional ordinance for this, of course, I'm in favor of it. It was not my intention, and it sounds like it was not the city's intention as well at this point, uh, you have a building permit. I appreciated Howard's, uh, explanation of that because that's where I was at. I would anticipate or suggest that it be a one-time, uh, fairly reasonable fee to have a chicken coop constructed and placed, uh, in the, on property. Other than that, I'm in favor of it. I, I've talked into people throughout the state that have ordinances in their communities. They've had very few, if any, major problems. And when they did approach property owners about issues like manure removal and things, they were very good about taking care of that, uh, and handling it appropriately. I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you. Teresa? Teresa?
Yes.
There we go.
Can I make reference to letters we've received?
Sure.
Or do, okay. You know, I have received several, uh, emails and phone calls. And most of them have been very much in support of moving forward with this, uh, which is certainly very positive support. The only concerns, uh, have to do with the manure, the smell, and, um, you know, what to do about that. You know, do you, uh, leave that up to the citizen to try to deal with it, with the neighbor? You know, what is the process with the city? Do they contact one person? Do they, do we have a certain step that we identify for the citizens to address any problems they have? You know, if their neighbor isn't dealing with the issues that we have identified as part of the, uh, ordinance? And also, uh, I had a couple of people call wondering the neighbors already have been doing this for a couple of years. And they have cited some problems with chickens running all over their yards and, uh, you know, problems that were interesting that could arise. And, uh, again, they too wondered, what do they do when they have these problems? They don't want to alienate their neighbors, uh, which certainly I can see. Uh, and yet, you know, they want to have the problems dealt with. So, uh, you know, what, what do you do? And those are things we need to lay out because obviously we have people that are very supportive of it. They find that they can deal with, uh, many things in our economy as well as their needs in their home. So we, we have a responsibility though, as, uh, protection of our citizens to deal with those other ends of it as well.
Thanks, Teresa. Um, Bill?
Generally, uh, very supportive of it, uh, would be supportive of, you know, minor tweaks if, uh, those seem to make sense. For example, stating the, uh, the amount of building permit and having it be either zero or negligible, uh, I think is a, a good idea, would be supportive of the, uh, habitable structure that, uh, that Howie mentioned. But, uh, you know, in general, I think, uh, we've, uh, heard support. We've heard, um, experiences of other communities. Our daughter lives next door to someone that has urban chickens in another, uh, community. Sometimes the neighbors benefit from extra eggs. So that there can be some positive, uh, neighborly sorts of things that go on as well. Uh, so sometimes we try to say, you know, find a way to say no. In this case, I think we should, uh, try to find a way to say yes. Uh, if that means a few changes or a few tweaks, um, that's fine. But I think we want to get to go.
Thanks, Bill. Linda? Unmute, unmute, Linda.
Thank you. Um, I had some questions and they, Teresa kind of related to them also. Um, and these are my complaints. And the reason that I'm going to share these complaints is because I have heard evenly from people, people who want it and people who don't. Um, and these are the questions that I have from the people who don't. What do you consider a parcel size? And if somebody is on an acre lot, and do they have the same requirements as somebody that's only on a quarter acre lot? Because that, that neighborhood is already a smaller sized neighborhood. So do we need to determine that type of a thing? Is for chickens? Somebody raised the question to me and said, if these are, you know, supposed to be urban free chickens, how much free space do, do four chickens have? I don't have chickens. I'm just bringing that to the forefront here. And then the other question is, where do you dispose of the poop? Because it is very dangerous to people. And, um, you know, we, we have to figure out where that's going to go. Who's going to pick that up? Is that a garbage thing? Is that, do people need to take them someplace? And then where are the complaints going to go? That's the other one. Are we having our residents call the police department because somebody's chicken coop is stinking? So, um, I mean, we just need, I feel like we need to, to kind of iron out those things. It's a hard decision. There's people that are for it and people that are against it. And, but these are the things that I have been confronted with. And I would be in support of just a one-time fee rather than an annual fee if we do go forward with this. But I kind of think that maybe we need to take some closer looks.
Okay, Ryan, I'm gonna circle back to you.
Hi. Interested to see how other people's takes on it were and what the questions they had were. I know some people live in a different city that have chickens, and it's been a great learning opportunity for them, for their kids to, you know, just have a couple of chickens and to kind of learn a little bit about life that way. But I also know that when it comes to animals, they can be from time to time slightly more unsanitary than maybe cats or dogs, especially when it comes to, you know, illnesses that they might be able to pass on to humans. But that's just a fact of life too, so. I guess I'm a little in support of people of being able to have chickens because it, um, I mean, it is a part of life to have chickens, to have animals and, and also it is a good source of food and eggs, for example. So I guess I'm somewhat in support of it.
So Al and Howie and, and Scott, do you, do you want to address some of those concerns that have been brought up? I mean, clearly, these are probably concerns that other cities have managed to figure out. And I think we're smart enough to figure them out too, so. Al, you want to go?
I'll, I'll jump in, but I don't want to step on Scott or Howie's toes. In situations.
Larry, Larry was asking to be recognized.
Yeah, Larry, Larry can go.
Larry, did you have some answers?
If I can, if I may, um, here. Chicken, chicken, um, manure is not, uh, toxic. I don't know where they got that information from. Chicken manure is used often in gardens and it's a very good fertilizer for gardens. Chickens eat, uh, hundreds of pests. And our city has been undated, my yard has. I've had my apple trees destroyed three years in a row, uh, by the Japanese beetle. That happens to be a pest that chickens love. And our rabbits, they will eat them until they're bored. So they eat a lot of pests in our, in our, in our homes, in our gardens. And I would argue that, uh, dog manure is just as toxic, if not more toxic, in cat litter. And the way we dispose of that in our community is in our garden. And so if people don't want it on their garden, uh, they can pick it up and put it in the garbage can and they have it taken out. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Al?
Yeah, Larry actually commented on one of the things that I was going to comment on. In terms of if, if a, so I think one thing that, uh, may have gotten missed in the process is if somebody applies for a chicken permit, we'll call it a chicken permit instead of a building permit, there's a, there's a provision in the ordinance that, that the neighbors would be notified. And they would have an opportunity to comment on the onset of that application being submitted to the city. And if they had a, if they had an issue with it, uh, they could communicate that back to the council and they're actually could, they could request a public hearing, or the council could request a public hearing be held, uh, on an applicant-by-applicant basis. So there would be an opportunity on the onset before, before a coop is even built for, for the neighbors to have input on it. So that would be the first thing. Second thing is, is, uh, certainly neighbors change over time. Somebody lives in the same residence for twenty years and has chickens. Somebody else moves in next door and they don't like it. You know, it would go through our, it would go through our typical code enforcement process, similar to a barking dog or similar to somebody who already has pests at their house. So it would go through a regular code enforcement situation. If their coop fell into disrepair, similar to if their garage fell into disrepair, their fence fell into disrepair. Um, and, and noisy animals are, are issues throughout cities anyways with, with dogs and other items. So it would follow that typical process. So the question of who would the complaints go to, it would be as similar to any other code enforcement issue. If there's an issue with the coop and, and the, the permit that's been, uh, supplied. In terms of the, uh, and then Larry answered the, the question about what do you do with the droppings? I mean, I have three cats and the litter goes in the garbage. I, many people on the call have dogs. And, and dogs have droppings too. And, uh, those are disposed of properly. I, I don't know. And, and dogs have droppings too. And those are disposed of properly. I, I don't know that this would be any different. But I'm not a chicken person. I don't own chickens. And it seems like we have several people on the call that, that do. So maybe they could provide additional identification with much more intelligence than my own.
Scott, do you have anything or Howie?
No, I think Al covered it from the perspective of it falls squarely in the code enforcement realm for any issues.
Yeah, I think the same thing. If someone doesn't take care of them, there's, I don't think they want to risk over a hundred dollar fine just for not taking care of their animals.
Okay, so.
There, if there is a problem, who, who do they call? I mean, do they call the police? Do they call the city? I mean, who, who actually works to help enforce these steps?
Al, did you want to repeat that again?
Yeah, it would be a regular code enforcement complaint, just like any other code enforcement complaint. It would, whether it goes to directly to me or to Howie or to Scott or to anybody, it just goes through the code process. We were luckily, we're small enough where that stuff can be easily kind of handled. I mean, I get, in the city administrator's office, I get code complaints all the time. And then, you know, either if it's a building complaint, I send them to Howie. If it's a, if it's more of a, kind of a, you know, I don't want to say criminal, but you know, if it's a law enforcement thing, it goes to Scott or Blaine. Yeah, if, 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 if we wanted to indicate in the ordinance, a specific person or position, we could do that. But it would, it would get treated like every other code complaint we get.
So were there, if there were slight changes that we wanted to make? Attorney Mark, do we have to go through the, the public hearing process again or? Go ahead.
No, you're not required to go through the public hearing process at all. This was a voluntary decision on the part of the council to provide for a public hearing for this ordinance. It's not required by statute. So if the council was in general favor, at least reviewing this again, provided that some amendments be made to the ordinance, then what the council would do would be move to approve the first reading subject to the request for, subject to the ordinance being revised as, as requested. So then it would come back for a second reading. So that's, that's consistent with the purpose of having multiple readings. It allows the council to make amendments to an ordinance before there, it gets to the final product. So that would be fine.
So typically what happens is we do, we do one, two or three readings. Oftentimes for an ordinance, we'll approve it and we'll waive the second and third reading. It sounds like there might be some editing that we would, might want to do to this ordinance where we would approve the first reading of the ordinance and then we would bring it back to the second meeting in July and review those amendments. And then we could vote at that time to approve it and waive the third reading. Or we could vote on the second reading and bring it back a third time. So I just want to make sure like everybody understands that process. So is there, is there somebody that wants to? Larry, did you want to comment on the process or? Okay, okay. So Larry is going to make a motion.
I move that we accept and adopt the first reading of this ordinance. And we make the addition of the habitable residential building, you know, in, in the setbacks and that we, that was it, and that, and then add that into the ordinance and waive the second and third reading.
Inga, did you get that? Could you repeat it for everybody?
Motion to approve the first reading with the addition of habitable when discussing the residential building and waive the second and third reading and adopt.
And what about fee? Do we have to have a fee in there?
That's by resolution, is that correct?
Right, that would come back as a separate action, but be a resolution. And we could bring that back on July 21st. I guess I would, I would ask if there was any, but I mean, we could, we could deal with Larry's motion and if there's a second and then during discussion, I would just ask that there be some direction as to what we thought was an appropriate fee or, or do you want us to do that research and bring that back? Sorry.
Okay. All right. So is there a second to Larry's motion?
I, I'm unclear, what was the portion about waiving the second and third? Because I, I thought what we were doing is approving the first.
His motion is to approve the first reading with the chain, with the addition of the habitable, of habitable when referring to the residential building, waive the second and third reading and adopt.
So that would be, that would be an amendment on the floor right now. That would then, that that, it would almost be as though the assumption would be that that revision is now a part of the, a part of the ordinance. And he would be moving to adopt this evening with that change.
Bill, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And that's the reason I'm, I'm not seconding that. I, I, I think it's good for it to come back with, you know, any possible changes.
Okay, is there anyone going to second? Okay, so without a second, then that motion does not move forward?
I would, I would move to approve the first reading and to ask staff to return with any proposed amendments based on the conversation that we had.
Is there a second? Okay, there is a second by Devon. So it would be to approve this first reading and then come back at the next council meeting for a second reading and vote.
That's correct.
Okay. All of those in favor?
Aye.
How many ayes do I have? Can you just raise your hand? You want to do a roll call?
I still didn't get it. So I'm going to say no.
Okay. Bill?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Devon?
Yes.
Larry?
No.
Linda?
No.
Ty?
Ty.
All right, I'm voting yes. Thank you very much, everybody. So that motion passes. And so we'll bring it back with those amendments that we discussed.
Okay, but that, that isn't what the motion said. It did not say to bring it back with the amendments. And that was why I voted no. So yes, if you're bringing back the amendments, okay.
Yes. So, so just to be clear, the motion that I had from Alderperson Wilson, seconded by Alderperson Elliott, was to approve the first reading and ask staff to return with any proposed amendments based on the conversation at the common.
No one said with the amendments. So, okay, that is why I voted no. I did, they didn't say that. You might have had it, but they didn't say it. So.
Okay, that's okay. We'll bring it back. All right. So we are, we are through with the chickens. And now we're going to move on to the bees.
Adam, mayor?
Yes.
I just need to clarify something. We're talking about amendments, but I'm not exactly sure what those amendments are. I just heard a lot of input.
Yes. So, so for, for the minutes, I would appreciate kind of just a list of what we're, we're looking for, I guess.
Yeah, I, I would agree. The only, the only amendment that, that I'm aware of was to change the, was to add the word habitable. But I guess at this point, without any further direction from the council, the ordinance would return and that would be the only change.
The other, the other suggestion that I heard regarded the fee for the permit and whether it was one time or multiple. And, you know, so my hope would be that what would come back would be, you know, a model that, that, that looks at those items.
Yeah. So, so that wouldn't be reflected in the ordinance. That would be reflected through a separate resolution. So that wouldn't actually be an amendment to the ordinance. I, I guess, Mark, we could put in the ordinance that it would be a one-time fee, right? But the ordinance wouldn't set the fee.
As it's set up right now, it's a one-time fee. It doesn't require it to be renewed on a yearly basis. So, so that's fine. That was, that was one of the comments. You're correct. It was expressed that, that there was support for a one-time fee and that's how it's, it's set up. Cause there, I had seen as an example in prior, when it was last looked at by the council, it was, it was provided for a yearly fee in that. So that wasn't in here. Then other than the adding the wording on making, having it be an habitable residential structure. Let's see. There was the question about the, the building permit and it's correct that if that remains in here, then that would be, that fee would be set by any resolution. And right now, as it's set up, it only provides for a permit fee for the keeping of the chickens. Now, I, I would suggest that 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 can be clarified, I think, based on the comments in terms of, because that, that's really a, we would be asked to clarify, well, what's meant by, by that? Is there going to be a separate building permit or is there going to be just one permit for this? The reason for a separate building permit is it requires more review by, say, the billing inspector than would be a doghouse. I don't, there's more requirements here for this than a doghouse. But so that's the one thing that as well was asked to be cleared up. Is there a separate billing permit or not? So I don't know what the comments are on that, but.
Yeah. Right now, there isn't a separate bill, there would, there isn't a separate building permit fee on the books, if we want to call it that, for a chicken coop. I think one way we could, could work around that is simply changing that language. This is just my thought. It's saying prior to the permit being issued, the applicant will file with the city clerk a completed building plan for the coop and other required enclosures. So simply replacing the word permit with plan, since that would be, since we'd have, we, we need to know that anyways. And that would be part of the review process that Howie would then undertake. And that's what would be shared with the neighbors at, in any kind of public notice if, if it's requested. So they would want to know where it is located on the property. What's the size going to be? Is there, how long is the run going to be? So we would want to know that. So simply a build, calling it a building plan maybe clears that up. Cause I don't, I don't know that it's our intent to have a separate building permit fee for a chicken coop.
No, I didn't.
Howie?
I think all you want is just so you have some record keeping. So the owner writes down the dimensions and is aware of the rules. And then also then, I guess the city has, knows who to notify as far as the neighbors are. So I, I, I think that'd be more the purpose of the permit, just to take care of the administrative things. And the setbacks, just to make sure. And have phone numbers, those types of things. And we have other fees that aren't building permit fees, like we have cemetery fees and some of those other ones. So, so it'd probably be similar to those.
I, my hope was just to get this right. And to be able to move forward on it and to do it relatively quickly. And I think two weeks from now is relatively quickly.
Oh yeah, I don't, none of these changes are so draconian that we couldn't get it done in two weeks. I don't see an issue with that. Nothing that's been discussed would give me any hesitation that we couldn't bring back an ordinance in two weeks that would address what's just been discussed in the last couple of minutes. I have no concerns with that at all.
Okay, ready? Are we ready to go? To bees, honeybees? So same procedure as we had last time. I will open the public hearing and Ingo will assist me in helping people speak on this issue. So the public hearing's open.
Okay, so. Carl Thompson, did you want to speak on the bees as well?
Yes. Again, in favor of this allowing bees. I do have a couple of questions about it. It says there's a, there would be a maximum of two hives per parcel. And I wondered if there is a size limit to those hives. I, yeah, I have not kept bees, but I've been reading about it. And I'm interested in it. But as far as I understand, there can be a fairly large variation, the size, the number of bees per hive. So and I, I can't imagine that you want to a bee counter coming out to count how many bees are in a, in a given hive. But if there's some kind of, if there's, if there is any guidance on that, I guess is a question. My other question is item K, the permit holder must provide verification of beekeeper training. And I wonder, I guess my question is specifically what kind of verification is that? What kind of training is required there? Does that mean, you know, reading, reading a book? Or attending some classes or seminars or something? So. But otherwise generally definitely in favor. And I think the, yeah, as, as has been stated, I think in the newspaper is pretty common knowledge. Bees play a pretty critical role in our environment. So I think it's wise that we allow them. Then Molly also, can we have Molly comment next?
Hi, sorry, I was tending the kids. I am not sure what my husband shared, but as far as honeybees go, they are non-aggressive. If we were talking about wasps, I would be opposed as well. However, even though our neighbor is allergic, the previous owners here had honeybees and she didn't have a problem with them. My grandma, I'm sorry, my mom and her boyfriend have honeybees and you can pet them. I'm not kidding. And they don't sting you. So it's, you know, obviously people have natural concerns about getting stung by bees, as do would we. But it's something that's manageable and we need honeybees to have food. That's the reality. And honeybees are in danger. So let's support them. Let's have beautiful flowers and a beautiful community. And that's kind of what we're hoping for. And honeybees are in danger, so let's support them. Let's have beautiful flowers and a beautiful community, and that's kind of what we're hoping for, so.
So. I'm just looking. Stu Elifson, did you have anything?
Um, oh, sorry, I'm running.
Hold on.
There we go. Well, there we are. We got two computers on here, sorry.
That's fine.
We live on John Paul Road. We're not very far from the, the people on Cerns Road that have bees. And in our backyard, when things are in flower, I mean, it just looked like they're crawling alive. There's so many bees, and we've never had a problem with them being aggressive or anything else. So, yeah, and we have a couple of dogs, and they've never had a problem with it. I don't think anybody's ever been stung, so that's all I had to add.
Thank you. Um, Linda, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just that I'm in favor for it. Thanks.
Perfect, thank you. Um, Tony, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I really don't have anything additional to add, because everybody knows they aren't very beneficial. Um, as far as the number of hives in beekeeping, you pretty much, I talk a hive like a stack. And you're talking like two stacks in the yard. The height of those will vary over the course of the summer. You know, the bees, the harder the bees work in summertime, and there's more flowers, more pollen, you'll see those boxes get higher. But then, in the summertime, you take some of those off, and that's what you're extracting. You're taking them all that honey away, and a lot of the bees will actually die off in the fall, so you're down to like two or three boxes high. Um, it will fluctuate in height, and, you know, and that's a good thing. That means the bees are doing their job, and they're making honey. And then in the fall, you take a lot of those boxes off. Or nap, no, they're not aggressive. I mow around them. I don't like pain. I wouldn't do that. But I've never been stung mowing around them, weed whacking around them. Um, they're honeybees. Like I said, they're not wasps. So I'd be in favor of it.
Thanks, Tony. Um, Laura McDermott?
Yes, um, I personally am totally for it. Um, I do a question. My neighbor, I know she used to, um, raise honeybees. And my question is, uh, is there anything regarding lot size? I mean, we live on, uh, point six, and hers is probably about an acre. So would it be, would it be depending on, on the acreage, on how many hives you can have? Um, I would love to learn from her. So again, with the, uh, having some kind of certificate on, on beekeeping, uh, that question too, on, on how do you achieve that? You know, she's going to be showing me how to do this. How do I approve that I know what I'm doing? Um, and then being neighbor, I, I would love, we discussed this too, about putting it right on our lot line, you know, so we both have the benefit of it. Now, is that something that would be allowed if the neighbors agree to that? And that's kind of with the chickens too. You know, we were kinda talking about, you know, I'll raise the chickens, she does the bees, and then we can share, you know, can, would we be able to put it on the lot line? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Bob Seals, do you have anything you want to add to this discussion?
Uh, yes, I do. Um, my biggest concern is safety. Uh, I've been keeping bees for ten years in the country, and I would love to keep bees in my city lot. However, I just don't feel confident that, uh, this would happen without somebody getting hurt. You know, we just have to face it that every city lot is not adequate to keep bees. And the provisions in this ordinance are poor. And, uh, I guess the last comment I'd like to make is that, uh, you really got wrapped up in fees when you're talking about chickens. Well, if you can't afford the fees, you can't afford to get started in bees, because every hive is gonna cost you at a minimum of $500. And chances are, the first winter, you're gonna lose at least half of them. Um, that's about all I had to say.
Thanks, Bob. What, is there anyone else who wanted to comment that we missed? I think we have everyone from the public then.
Okay, thank you, Inga, and thank you, everyone, for your comments, um, and we appreciate that. So I'm going to close the public hearing. And now, um, I, I did wanna let everybody know that Ryan, um, had to leave because there's gonna be a baby born tonight in the Holbrook family. So we're, uh, anxious and hopeful, excited and praying. So, um, questions, comments on beekeeping? Teresa? Bill?
I'm supportive, no comment.
Um, Devin?
I, I'm in support.
Larry?
Supportive. You know, the one comment I have is about the training. You would actually go, go online. There are a couple of options for training. You'd be what is called a certified beekeeper. And you'd receive the appropriate training, and that's what we were trying to address in the order. So, uh, you would, you would have a certificate that shows that you've had training by a certified beekeeper, or a certified beekeeper. And, uh, the other comment I like about, I wanna add is, I like the idea of neighbors sharing, uh, the hives or sharing the coop. In this case, the hives, because we're talking about bees, uh, as long as the neighbors are in agreement. That wouldn't bother me at all. Otherwise, I'm in favor.
Okay, Linda?
I'm in favor. I don't have any comments.
Okay, so, um, how would you like to proceed? We had some, uh, some questions. Um, I think we did clarify about the training, but I don't, I don't know there's, if we wanna like follow a similar, similar procedure with bees, or are we just gonna just approve it with? I don't know. There was a couple of questions about size and number of hives, so what are you all, what are you thinking, Al, Howie?
Yeah, I think, um, Tony answered the question about hives and what constitutes a hive. And then in terms of lot size, yeah, they're, uh, it, uh, it's correct. We don't have a, a differentiation based on lot size. Tried to just be equitable across the board. You know, Larry was the, the main author of this ordinance, so, um, I don't have any other, any other comments than what Larry's already provided.
Do you want to have more specific training or language in the ordinance related to the training, the certification that was referenced?
Larry, what do you think?
Well, I, I'm comfortable with that. Where we could beef that up a little, if, uh, if the rest of the council was in favor of that, I don't have a problem with it. Cause if, you do wanna be clear, it isn't just reading the book. I, I want you to do like most of the communities have done, have a certified person training you, or you go to a class and get trained.
Howie, what do you think?
I, I don't know a lot about hives. I mean, maybe like if you're gonna, you know, do another reading, you could put hives slash stacks, you know, so that you take care of both situations with that. As far as like the neighbors sharing a lot line, if they give each other permission, that's in there, or that, that's already written in there. Otherwise, for our inspections, it would be just mostly just making sure it's the, the right distance away from everything.
Okay, so is there, um, a motion? Oh. Sorry. Mark?
Yes, and going back to, uh, the question regarding, I guess it'd be six hyphen twenty-three sub K, which is the beekeeper training. I think that, from what I'm hearing there, that could be simply addressed by just changing the word verification to certification to provide that the permit holder must provide certification of beekeeper training. It sounds like there's, alternative means of providing that certification. So I don't know how formal the council wanted to be on, so to speak, on that, uh, but, uh, perhaps that would be one way to address that, make it more specific, to say certification. I think that's what they were looking for. Let's see. Now, um, the, uh, on the issue of setbacks, there is a provision for having closer hive placement than 25 feet from habitable areas, but there's still a provision in here that, that provides that hives and related structures that form the apiary must have a minimum 20-foot front yard setback, and a minimum of 10-foot side yard and 10-foot rear yard setback. So if you wanted to have that be able to be adjusted by, by written agreement, that should be added in the subpart E as well.
Anything else? Okay, he's muted himself, so I'm good to move on. So we could, um, do the first reading tonight, or, um, can we just do the reading and waive the second and third with those amendments? Mark?
I guess it depends on the motion. You can amend it on the record with a motion. You can move or approve the first reading and suggest and request in your motion amendments, and then, uh, waive the second and third and adopt. I would suggest that it would be, since it'd be, what I'm, what I was suggesting at least, was a little bit more involved than, than just changing one word and one subpart. So, it might be clearer if it was approved, the first reading was approved, and then we were given direction on what revisions to make to it to come back for the second reading. But that's, again, that's one option for the council to consider.
All right, is there a motion? Linda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading with the changes of hives in their location to include hives hyphen stacks. And then for section E, that we add the verbiage, or by written agreement, from mutual property owners. And then for item J, I'm sorry, for item K, uh, replace the word verification with certification, and then bring it back for a second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Um, I'm just gonna go ahead and do the roll call. Um, Teresa? Bill?
Hi.
Devin?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Okay, uh, that, uh, motion passes, and we will bring that back for a second reading at the next council meeting. Not to rush anybody, but we're gonna move on to, um, number nine. And possible action regarding ordinance four seven four, amending section seventy-eight, twelve thirty-three of the Code of Ordinances concerning mini warehouse off-street parking requirements.
So this is an item that was brought before the common council a few weeks ago. And during that conversation, uh, it was, uh, recommended or directed of staff to further amend the ordinance to allow for off-street parking to meet the criteria of one to twenty stalls as opposed, or one to twenty units as opposed to the one to ten that was previously in, uh, the ordinance. That restarted the process for the ordinance. This went before the plan commission earlier today, and they recommended approval, forwarded a, a positive recommendation to the council. Other than the change from one to ten units to one to twenty units, the ordinance is identical to the one that was seen a few weeks ago. So this would be the second reading, uh, of this ordinance with that change included.
Okay, so I just wanted to let others know that are on the Zoom meeting, that if you don't wanna stay for the rest of the, uh, council meeting, you are welcome to do so, of course, but if you wanna leave the Zoom meeting, you're free to leave the Zoom meeting. The council members can't unless they're having a baby like Ryan is. Don't everybody rush to leave. But just wanted to put it out there. So, um, anything on this?
No, I don't have any questions. It's fine.
Bill?
No questions.
Devin?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Is there a motion? Devin?
There it goes.
I, I will motion to approve the second reading.
Is this a second or a first?
First.
Mark?
I think it's the second.
Okay.
Yes, it would be, one, one, one option is a motion to approve the second reading, waive the third reading and adopt. That would be one option.
Devin?
Okay, I will motion to, um, approve the second read, reading, waive the third and adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bill, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? All right. Uh, discussion and possible action regarding conditional use permit approval for mini warehouse on Arthur Drive.
So in connection with the item that was just approved, uh, this is the conditional use permit for the proposed mini storage unit project along Arthur Drive. The plan commission previously reviewed and approved their site plan contingent upon receiving a conditional use permit. Uh, they reviewed that conditional use permit this afternoon at four o'clock and forwarded a favorable recommendation to the common council, and held a public hearing as well, in which there was considerable public input on that item. So now, because it is a conditional use permit, it moves forward to the common council for final approval. So with the approval of the previous ordinance, the approval of their site plan, and now, uh, the conditional use permit could be approved as well.
Anything? Larry?
Uh, no, the plan commission, uh, talked about this, uh, this afternoon, and, uh, there was no concern. I had.
Devin?
No comment.
Bill?
Uh, I sat in on the plan commission meeting, and, uh, there were plenty of questions, but the answers were really good ones. Uh, and, uh, the owner and the owner's representative, I think, did a fine job of, uh, addressing the concerns and, uh, making the citizens that had concerns, I think, feel comfortable, so. and making the citizens that had concerns, I think, feel comfortable. So I'm quite supportive.
Thank you, Bill. Teresa?
Nope.
Linda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan for the mini warehouse on Arthur Drive, or conditional use, I'm sorry.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Mayor? I just wanted to say that I also attended via phone the plan commission meeting and and I feel like the neighbors' concerns were addressed. And I personally am very satisfied with the the plans for the trees and the plantings around the building and hope that it will blend with Cross Ridge Park very well. I think it will.
Thank you. All right.
Mayor, if I may, before, before we leave, yeah, so, yeah, thank you very much. We just want to say thank you to everybody on your team, your outside legal council or staff people, been really good to work with. And so we really appreciate that and look forward to a good project. And in closing, it occurred to me, you talked about the birds and then the bees and then something a little more mundane, self-stored. So thank you very much.
We appreciate you guys hanging in there for those public hearings and how well that you have worked with the with the city too.
Also, Mayor, I wanted to, I wanted to thank you also, Mayor, this is Larry Schultz, the owner. I want to thank you and your staff for all the work you've done. I appreciate it very much.
That's nice to hear. Thank you. And you guys are free to flee, fly the coop, whatever you want to do.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks a lot. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, item number eleven, discussion and possible action regarding a TIF development agreement with Capital Asset Investments LLC.
So we discussed this a little bit a few weeks ago when the council approved and offered a purchase to sell two point five acres of land to Capital Asset Investments LLC and indicated that we would return with a TIF development agreement. This is the TIF development agreement that would allow for the development of that parcel to occur on that two point five acre site. And earlier in the plan, earlier in the council meeting, you approved of the CSM to create that lot. The TIF development agreement is is one, if there is such a thing, is a kind of a standard TIF development agreement. This pretty much is it. The developer agrees to develop the site with a fast food restaurant and generate a minimum amount of annual property taxes, which in this case is eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. In return for generating that minimum amount of property taxes on an annual basis for ten years, we would agree to sell the land to them for one dollar, thus recuperating our costs that we have invested into that land over that ten-year period through the new value created by the development. Other than that, again, the development agreement is pretty straightforward. Gateway Drive is an existing street with existing utilities, so there's no requirement or requests for extension of utilities or extensions of streets that we may have seen in other TIF development agreements. The standard site plan approval process would still be required via the TIF development agreement. So when the developer brings, comes forth with site plan, you would need to go through the plan commission and that would be reviewed. Zoning is appropriate for this type of development, so it doesn't require any additional action by the council once approved. So really, this is a pretty straightforward one, if there is such a thing. They plan to begin development this year and have that facility open for operations by the end of the year and would need to generate that value by the, by January one of twenty twenty-one. So they're on a bit of a tight timeline, but they are confident that they can do so. So with the approval of the TIF development agreement, the next step in the process then would be to schedule the closing for the land sale and bring forth the site plan for the development of that site.
Okay. Comments? Linda?
Larry had his hand up.
Oh, I know, but I have a list. Like I have, I have, I have an order.
I'm sorry. I don't have any comments. I'm in support.
Did you say, Larry? Okay.
Can't hear you.
Got muted. I mean, Mayor. I did have a question, Al and or Dan or maybe Mark even. A person approached me and I, I've worked with TIF for a number of years in in my volunteer capacity and I didn't know the answer to that. But let's say, I'll use myself as an example. I entered into a TIF agreement, like, like we're talking about. And I'm supposed to deliver eight thousand seven hundred some dollars in in tax generated revenue. And I don't do that. What happened? That was the question to be asked.
Yep. In this case, they would be required to meet that minimum property tax value guarantee. So in the event that they only generated, let's just use round numbers, five thousand dollars worth of taxes, they would be required to pay the city that difference between five thousand dollars in that annual cycle and the eighty, the eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars that would be required for the annual cycle. If the next year they get up to eight thousand seven hundred and fifty, they're good to go. But they would be required to meet that minimum property value guarantee, well, I'm sorry, minimum tax payment guarantee, whether that be through the taxes that are generated or through a secondary form of payment. They would be on the hook for that.
Got you. That's, that's the answer I wanted to give, but I didn't know for sure. Thank you.
That's okay. Makes me feel like I'm needed.
Okay, we'll let you think that. Devin? Bill?
No comment.
Teresa? Is there a motion? Linda?
Make a motion to approve TIF development for TIF number six with City of Milton and Capital Assets Investments.
LLC?
LLC.
Larry, is that a second?
Yes, it is.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the acceptance of a donation of the Veterans Park Pavilion and parking lot.
So for those folks who were present on Sunday, there was a nice dedication ceremony for the new Veterans Park Pavilion that has been constructed. They officially turned the key over to Anisa and I, but that actually doesn't make it official until the council accepts it. Anisa and I went back later and we couldn't get in with that key anyways, so, or have to get, have to get a real one. It was a little bit too big. So the council would need to accept the donation on behalf of of the city for the, the group that put that together. And at the time that we wrote this memo, there was a few things that were still outstanding at that facility. And I think Howie was able to check some of those off, but there are still a few pieces that we would need, such as the warranties for any of the work done, as well as the owner's rep certification. I might be saying that word wrong.
Architect.
Yes, okay. So if if the council is is willing to adopt, accept the donation, we would just ask that you include that as part of the motion. And that would be to accept the donation contingent upon receipt of warranties for work performed as well as the architect's certification. Did I miss anything, Howie?
No, that's, that's most of it, yeah.
There was some landscaping and stuff like that, but that's.
That's done pretty much.
Yeah. And that, and that hornet's nest is gone too, so we're not accepting that.
You're not accepting that.
One, one other outstanding item for the pavilion too is just the donor recognition sign. So we're still working on finalizing that and that'll be ordered soon.
Okay, so Linda, you had your hand raised?
Yes, I'll make that motion happily to accept that donation with those contingencies.
Second.
You got those contingencies? Okay, and Bill seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I'm sorry I didn't go through the list. I'm getting antsy. All right, so now we have to talk about, um, discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand twenty nineteen establishing a rental fee and security deposit for the Veterans Park Pavilion. And I wanted to let you know that I received correspondence regarding the and I think other people may have received that, though, that too. Um, so I don't know if you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, I can kind of give you a background. So the fee structure that we have proposed mirrors the fee structure for pretty much all other park pavilions. The only difference is, is we included a rental fee reduction for veterans. And we have the security deposit mirror that of the community house. Being that it is a new facility and it has pretty high-end finishes, we wanted to make sure that the that in the unfortunate event that there is damage, that we might be able to recoup that cost. We did, as the mayor mentioned, we took this to the Parks and Recreation Committee and and they, the feedback that they provided back was that they they felt that the fees were too low and recommended that they be bumped up to a minimum of five or a hundred. And there was some additional discussion about should a portion of that fee be kept aside in a separate account for the Veterans Park Pavilion in terms of maintenance and upkeep because it is such a nice facility. So that that complicates matters, but it isn't something that we can't accomplish. We would just need to make sure that we know that that's the direction that we have. So similar to the conversation we just said about the chicken and the bee ordinance and their permit fees, this would be, these fees would be established via resolution, so we could certainly change that within the resolution as well.
So would you be bringing back a different resolution?
That would be, that would be your discretion. We could, as, as we talked about before, if it was something simple, saying Milton residence fee instead of being fifty would be a hundred. I think that's an easy change that we could make on the record. But if there are talks of sep, putting up a separate segregated fund, you know, we could do that administratively internally, but it would probably be beneficial if that was somehow codified in a resolution. So when Dan and I win the lottery and we're not here, somebody understands why we're doing what we're doing. But I don't know if Mark Schrader has any thoughts on that as well.
No, I, I agree with what Al said, that that could be handled in that manner. It's a simple revision to the resolution. Then you can just accomplish that in your motion. If it, if it's a bit more involved in terms of coming up with the language, then I would also recommend having that come back to you again at your next meeting.
So if we don't have something approved tonight, can we rent the facility out or we can't rent it out for the next two weeks or what?
Well, I guess technically we could rent it. We just wouldn't have a fee for it. So it would be, I don't know that there would be anything that would prevent us from renting it. We just haven't established a fee or the council hasn't established a fee. I don't know that we would want to, though, rent it without this fee structure.
Mark looks like he's leaning in.
I was just gonna say that our typical turnaround time on any park rental application is somewhere between five and seven business days anyway. Very rarely, it's not, no one can just come and say, hey, it's Wednesday and I want to rent the pavilion on Thursday. That doesn't happen because there's a full process that we have to go through to make sure that there, there's no delinquencies and other things like that. So there, there is, there is some lag anyway. So if you're worried that someone couldn't rent it in the next week, e- even if a resolution passed tonight, it probably would not be rented this weekend.
But it would still delay it, right? Like?
Yeah, because we need to know a fee to charge.
Right. Yeah, so, so like what Dan's saying is this weekend is probably moot. It's probably, it's probably the following weekend that would then become subject to somebody saying, hey, I'd really love to rent it the weekend of, and I don't have a calendar around me right now, the weekend of July eighteenth. We wouldn't, we likely would have to deny that request or indicate to them that, you know, we don't have a fee structure, so therefore we're not able to rent it at this time. This is probably literally one weekend in play, but I know what you mean. I understand what your concern is.
So could we could we pass the resolution with the fee structure and then come back with a separate resolution that talks about an account?
Sure, I think we could do that. Um, you know, I mean, yeah. It's just the first, the, you know, maybe that first fee we collect doesn't go into that account, but yeah, I, I think we could do that. If, if, so long as, again, it kind of, as, as Attorney Schrader said, so long as the, we're not, you know, really overcomplicating the fee structure if we want to, you know, if it's, again, if it's something simple like Milton residence is fifty, non-Milton residence is one fifty, and that's the only change we're making, I think that's easy enough to adopt on the floor this evening. And then, you know, Dan and I and Inga could work on some sort of internal process to segregate those accounts, maybe with some input from the Parks and Recreation Committee. And that could come back on the twenty-first or August second or, yeah. So you're right, that, that approach would work.
So what was the recommendation for the, was it a hundred and what else?
There was, Inga can probably help me out on this. I think there was a, it ranged between seventy-five to a hundred for, for Milton residents. I don't know that anybody addressed the concept of non-Milton residents in their emails. But, you know, my recommendation is, is if you wanted to go with like a hundred for Milton residents, that we would proportionally increase the non-Milton residents by that much and then it keeps it kind of clean.
So just to give some perspective too, so Central Park, South Goodrich Park and Lamar Park, those are all of our open-air pavilions. Those are rented for fifty dollars for the day and then a hundred dollar security deposit. The community house is rented for a hundred and twenty dollars a day. The twenty dollars is an extra surcharge that's supposed to go towards maintenance of that facility and then a hundred dollar security deposit. So for non-residents, though, those fees double. So it's two twenty then to rent the community house and a hundred dollars a day to rent the open-air pavilions. They, we'd suggested a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the security deposit because the finishes in the pavilion are at a higher level than some of those other facilities.
Mayor? So these numbers here that we have listed on this resolution, are these the ones that the Parks and Rec gave us? Or this is what city staff has determined?
This is what mirrors all other pavilions.
Okay.
So, so, yeah, that's, that's, that was where we just, that was our starting spot.
Okay.
So we just said, if we're gonna treat this like every other pavilion, this is what the rental rates would be, with the exception of the veteran discount. Parks and Rec thought that those were too low. Frankly, on staff, we, we agree, they are too low. But we didn't want to create, you know, we didn't want to assume that there was, that that, that feeling was pervasive and we didn't want to go out on a limb and say, hey, we, we really like this pavilion more than the other ones, so therefore we should charge more. So that's why we brought this forth.
And we do like this one. It's nicer, it's newer.
So one, one option, I guess we were talking about was a seventy-five dollar rental fee for residents and then twenty-five of that goes into that separate maintenance fund, which we can address at a different time. But that was one idea that we had. So kind of a middle of the road between the enclosed community house and the open-air pavilion.
Larry?
Another way to approach it, I like what, what Inga's just said, is just charge a higher security deposit on, on veterans. Because it's a nicer, newer facility, nicer facility, you know, charge a higher security deposit so you cover potential damage.
Yes, I think that I, the Parks and Rec did agree with having a higher security deposit, right?
Just, just to clarify, this didn't go specifically to a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. I had just sent the information out to the Parks and Recreation Commission and I received. I had just sent the information out to the Parks and Recreation Commission and I received feedback from two of those commissioners. So just to, just to clarify that.
Okay.
And the only reason I suggested that, Mayor, is because I don't want people to not use the facility because the fees, you don't want it to get too high where people don't use it, but you want people to also respect and recognize that we want it to be taken care of.
Yeah, I think, you know, like it's, it's a brand-new bill, it's brand-new, you know, it's, I don't have any concern, I don't think we'll have an issue with people renting it and not, or not renting it. I don't think the, the fees are that, the increase, the recommended increases that high. Linda?
I guess, I don't know how much of a discussion you want to have at this point in time, but I kind of feel like this should go to the Parks and Rec Commission. They have put a lot of their time into this structure for the last three, two, three years. Between this and everything else that's going on at Veterans Park, I would kind of like to see this go back to the full committee.
Well, we did ask them for feedback.
It's not, I'm just having it on an agenda, though.
My, my main concern is that then now we're looking at four to six weeks it may not get rented out at all this year in warm weather, right? Because then we got to wait for Parks and Rec to meet and then come back and I just, I want people to use it. Bill?
And I would suggest moving forward with a default number, and we've been talking about that default number. We can go back and change it at the time that we set up a structure for creating a permanent fund, for example. So I'd go ahead and let's move on it, get it into the flow, and then if we want to change the fee later, we can.
Okay, then somebody, somebody should make a motion.
Or do you want to go by each line and just make sure everyone's okay with each of the fees that are proposed in the memo or make adjustments?
That would be helpful.
Okay, so let's start with Milton Residence, that's the base amount. In the memo, it's $50. Do you want to increase that or keep it the same?
I've heard 100 and I'm fine with 100.
Am I?
Okay, so Milton Residence Veterans, do you want to have a discount for veterans?
Is that what we had, the regular memo? We did, right?
Yes, it was $40 for veterans.
I mean, what was the percentage in decrease? That 10 bucks?
$10.
20%.
There you go.
I was muted, I said 20% first, Dan.
I was thinking it.
And then the, the non-resident fee was double the 100?
Yes.
Okay.
So I, I'm sorry, for, for the veterans residence, do you want that to be 80 then? Okay.
I think that, that would be consistent and make sense.
And non-Milton Residence have it at 200?
Correct.
Okay, and Milton, non, non-residence veterans?
I think it's the 20% applied to the 200, so that would be 160?
Or you just make veterans all the same because they all serve, I'm just throwing that out.
Way to go, Larry.
Yeah.
I'm okay either way. I, I kind of like the idea of, of having a separate, a different fee for non-residents. If they want the lower fee, find somebody in Milton to be involved in it and, you know, put it in their name, there's a way that they can do it. So I, I would, I would move, let me see what we've got here. We're taking action. I would move that we approve the rental fee of, let's see, let's get it right now, $40 for veterans, or for resident veterans?
Wait, wait, do you want to, do you want to approve what we just went over?
Yeah.
Okay, so Milton Residence $100, Milton Residence Veterans $80, non-Milton Residence 200, non-Milton Residence Veterans 160, and then the security deposit of 125.
I would move approval of that fee structure.
Is there a second? Linda, Linda has moved it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, we better get that rented out next weekend.
So then we'll, we'll
Linda, sign up.
We'll talk internally about a kind of segregated fee, how we're going to handle it internally, how, if, how we would handle it internally, and then we'll bring that back to the council. But at least now we can rent it out.
So what is 14, discussion, direction, and possible action regarding park rental guidance?
So that's another agenda item.
Another agenda item.
Madam Mayor, may I offer a suggestion to staff? If we could in that process, Al, when we have the segregated fund, that we would accept donations to that one, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, there may be a veteran's family that wants to honor their deceased member or veteran and could donate to that segregated fund to be, to that pavilion. Just an idea.
And, and we'll still have the Veterans Park Pavilion account set up, so if someone does want to make donations, we'll still have that. And, I mean, it could be a situation where this maintenance fee or whatever we call it goes into that account, because we still have those, those donor dollars left, that, that needs to be segregated to make sure that we're using those funds appropriately.
That answers my question.
Is there a recommendation on what percentage of these rental fees you want segregated?
What, what was your question again, Dan? I'm sorry.
Is there, is there a recommendation on what percentage of the rental fees that would be desired to be segregated?
25%.
Percent? Yeah.
Okay, are we ready for 14? Al?
Oh, okay. So discussion, direction, and possible action regarding park rental guidance for City Milton Park Rentals. As the memo kind of points out, we have discussed, our reopening plan addressed the concept of park pavilions, which seems to be the second most favorite topic of tonight's meeting, but it doesn't discuss the concept of park rentals. So it is a different concept altogether in the sense that sometimes there are entities that request the exclusive use of a park. Typically, those are sports teams, almost, almost always sports team. And they want to be able to practice or have competitions or hold tryouts or drills within those park areas. So this would be a kind of the open spaces of South Goodrich or Lamar. And how this came about is there was a request from Milton Youth Football to have an exclusive use of one of the parks. And this happens every year. This isn't anything new. This is a regular occurrence on an annual basis in the City of Milton. And this wasn't addressed in the reopening plan because Rock County Health Department had indicated that they were going to provide sports-specific guidance for what they thought was appropriate level of activity, action, competition, drills, things of that nature for sports. They have subsequently released that guidance and have included it in the packet. So our question for the council is, is for a matter of consistency, do we want to follow that same guidance? In discussion with the Milton School District, that's how they are moving ahead. So when they get requests from sports teams to utilize their facilities, they are following that same guidance. So in essence, you would be allowed to rent out a park for exclusive use, but you would not be allowed to hold competitions until you're in Phase 3, for example. So that's the question that we have, is this, is this how we would want to proceed with the park, this park use rentals?
So right now, how it's working, like they just show up, like softball just shows up, they don't have exclusive use. So, right, how we, like that's how it's working now.
They, yeah, they don't reserve it because they just go down there and use it.
Yeah, and so it, some of the other organizations want exclusive use, so just, so you know, like, we can have guidelines and people can not request exclusive use and they can go down there and they can play and not follow these guidelines. And there isn't really any enforcement and on this. So what we're talking about is if they want exclusive use of it.
Correct. And what we would do, if this is the event, if this is the direction we go, as you can see the attachment that's also included, is in the event that somebody rents a park for a park use agreement, they would have this supplemental information as to what they would be, what we would be requesting they do.
Al, for that, that supplement too, is that for park pavilion rentals as well?
That wasn't, that wasn't the intent, no.
Okay.
But it certainly could be, it's not all that different.
Okay, so I, I'm just going to go through my list. Teresa, thoughts, questions?
I just want, does this, just to think about it, does this deny or prevent anyone else's use of our, you know, public parks?
Well, I guess it depends on how you're looking at it. If somebody, if we do rent it, then it does deny or prevent anyone else from using it. So just merely by the allowing the exclusive use of a park, which again, has been our practice probably back for 50, 60 years, you're, you're, you're inherently eliminating somebody's use.
So, so we've been doing this.
Oh, we have been doing this?
We've been doing it.
I misunderstood you, Al. I thought this was something new.
No, so what, no, we've been, as far as I know, and how we can, can probably talk more about, I mean, we've been renting parks out for probably 60 years.
I know, but not exclusively for?
Yes, we have.
Okay, okay, then I misunderstood you. I thought this was something new.
The only difference with this is if we were to do it this year, we would request that they follow the Rock County guidelines. That's the only difference.
Oh, okay. All right, no, then.
Part of the reservation too was that the groups would get together in the fall. It kind of started with football and youth soccer and youth football. They would each reserve a certain park and then they would stay separate from each other. And then just when they're two adult groups, they would kind of know, these guys are using these parks, we'll use the other ones. So, so it kind of just helped so they knew they were separated in their own areas for that reservation for that night. But it's, it's not for the playgrounds or anything else, it's just the, kind of the open area.
Yeah, the fields, yep.
So there's no stopping me from going down there and playing catch with my grandson, for example, in a, in a part of the park that's not on the playing field.
Correct.
You, you can use the rest of the park, they just have the right to go down there and have a practice. And, you know, it's kind of like, I guess if they're having a full practice, if somebody just came down there and decided just to start riding bikes and stuff all through their practice, they could kind of tell them, we've got a reserve, so, you know, don't do that, so.
Okay, so Teresa, you're good?
Yes.
Okay, Bill?
I'm okay.
Devin?
No, Kevin.
Larry? Anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Linda?
I thought that MREC was scheduling out all of the fields. When did that stop?
They're still scheduling, they actually have some, they usually call for some of the reservations and then they do that. But these are mostly the things they're not involved in.
They do a little bit more with like the baseball and softball fields and not so much the, the, just general open spaces that we have for people to do, like the Little Tyke football games and stuff.
So what we're talking about here is that we would request that they follow the Rock County reopening phased plans. That, that's really all we're talking about. We're not changing any other practice that we have done over the decades. So that's really, we're talking about safety.
Right.
Safety issues here.
Yeah, so it would be clear that if they choose to rent the park, they should not be holding competitions, for example.
Yeah.
Just so they're aware of that when, when they use the park.
Yeah, the Rock County guidelines, they're very specific. They went through each sport, as you know, you have that information, and developed recommendations. So our question is, is there a resolution that we want to follow these, these safety recommendations when we rent our park space out? So is there a resolution?
I think that we should.
Are you making that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Is it the recommended motion from the memo to direct staff to follow the Rock County Sports and Extracurricular Activity Guidance when renting park facilities for exclusive use for said purposes?
Yes, please.
Okay, perfect.
And is there a second? Bill, second it? All those in favor? I'm taking the vote, though. Do you want me to back off the boat, vote, Larry?
Well, I, I just wanted to know, obviously I probably know the answer, but I want to be sure. This rescinds or, or not when the Rock County thing ends?
Oh.
Do you follow what I'm getting at? It's tying us into the Rock County plan.
Yeah, 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 it does. That's, so all along, so far, we have followed the Rock County plan as our guidance.
Perfect. I just didn't want us to get tied up in something we couldn't extract or fill.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a commercial facade grant application for First Community Bank of Milton located, the addresses are, is it two addresses, 202 and 216, or all of the numbers in between?
They're 202 through 216. They actually have three, three frontages.
On Merchant Row.
So First Community Bank of Milton has requested a commercial facade grant from the City of Milton to assist in their renovations that are currently underway at their facility. The request would cover $5,000 of their $614,000 project. This would be similar to requests that we've received from Junction Pub and from Chris Agnew and Cindy Wright and, you know, up and down kind of the commercial corridor there. This one is for First Community Bank as part of their project that's currently underway. And funding would come from TIF 7 in this case.
I didn't hear you.
Linda, any questions or comments?
I'm in support, no questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Devin?
I, I'm in support, though. Work looks beautiful.
Bill?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a, make a motion to approve the grant application for First Community Bank.
Is there a second? Devin? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay. Discussion and possible, that motion carried. Discussion and possible action regarding a municipal court forfeiture request for Municipal Ordinance 18-45.
So this is a memo prepared by Judge Chris Kuffler setting the forfeiture amounts for the ordinance 1845, which prohibits domestic animals within the cemetery. So it outlines the first, second, and third offense and defines that So it outlines the first, second, and third offense and defines that could be levied in the event that someone receives a citation for this violation.
Linda, any questions or comments?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Larry?
No.
Bill?
No.
Devon?
No.
Is that everybody? Is there a motion? Linda?
Some of them.
Is there a second? Teresa? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. I don't know why this meeting is wearing me out. Committee reports. Anybody, just raise your hand if you want to report on a committee. I'm giving you three seconds to raise your hand. Okay, seeing no hands. Score report. Inga?
Um, so I met with representatives from the Ice Age Trail Alliance and the Rock County Chapter for the Ice Age Trail Alliance to talk about, uh, promotion they're doing in October called the Mammoth Hike Forty Challenge. So they're going to be encouraging people to hike forty miles on the Ice Age Trail during the month of October and then people can log their miles and, um, they're going to have an app set up, a landing page on their website. They did receive a joint effort marketing grant from the Department of Tourism, so it, they should be getting the word out to all the different people in the state as well. They are going to be doing a lot of promotion of their trail communities and Milton is one of them. So I think this will be a really great opportunity for us to highlight some different things in our community to, um, people who are hiking the trail.
We should challenge the school board.
So I'll be working, um, on some videos that I talked to the Historic Preservation Commission about, just maybe thirty to sec, thirty to sixty second clips, um, about some different locations in Milton that people can watch on an app that they have set up, um, as people are hiking and can learn more.
That's excellent. Ashley, I see, I think her, the wheels are turning in her brain about what books we're gonna read while we're walking, I don't know.
Well, I want, I want to do that challenge, I think that's, um, we opened up to the public yesterday, um, it's been going okay. Um, people are in and out and that's what we need right now, it's not what I want, but it's what we need, so, um, but we're doing okay.
Excellent. Good job on your decorations, too. Howie?
Uh, well, Mark might have some of the same stuff, but, um, they're gonna pave Elizabeth Street next week, hopefully, and the rest of Galen Drive, and actually did the last occupancy up there, so his houses are all built now, up in that area, Rainbow and Galen. The heat's caused a few street problems, so we'll just have to fix those. Other than that, they're just doing regular things, you know, they did brush collection today in the heat and so, and also the, um, new employee, Noah, um, Melkey started today, he's the water operator, so, started yesterday.
Oh, we should have invited him to the council meeting, he missed out on so much. Marky Mark, did you go have supper?
No, I was actually having some, uh, technical difficulties with that storm that came through. I had to get up on the barn roof and fix the antenna. No. Um, there's too much to add beyond what Howie said, but, uh, they, um, working on the pavement maintenance program, they'll go out to bid here next week and working on the capital improvement plan, uh, received some information for some water tower maintenance type items too, so be able to incorporate some of that. That's about it.
Thank you, Dan?
We talked about probably the most, most important financial document that the city has and, uh, it gets, uh, trumped by parks and, uh, bees and chickens, but, um...
What are you gonna do? I don't know.
I just want to publicly thank, uh, that, that stuff doesn't happen in a vacuum, that, um, there's a lot of, all of our directors do a great job of managing their own budgets and asking more detailed questions instead of, um, asking me to micromanage their budget, so I greatly appreciate that. And then Ashley helped me out a ton by scanning a whole bunch of those documents that Monica alluded to and so did Rebecca and Carrie during, uh, the month of March and April. So if anyone has any questions on that audit report, once you have a chance to read it, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Dan. Al?
Mark's just happy that he's no longer the newest employee at the city of Milton.
No, no one needs a nickname, too.
Aaron two, that's, isn't that what he's already started off as, Howie?
Not sure, give Mike...
Aaron squared?
Yeah, I, I don't see it, so he, he's good in my book. Um, no, we had a very long Plan Commission meeting this evening and we had a very long council meeting. And that's just an indication that things don't stop just because there's a virus. And that's a good thing, keeps us busy, keeps our minds on different things. Certainly presents challenges, that's for sure. Uh, but, uh, you know, we've got a good group of people who are committed, uh, to, to continuing to do the good work that we've been doing all along. And, uh, you know, it's, it's one of those things that, uh, I'm fortunate to work with that group and the community's fortunate to have them, um, whether they see us every day or not. It's, uh, there's a lot going on, this is, I mean, nineteen items on the agenda, uh, tonight and, and there was probably twelve on Plan Commission, that's, it's a lot, a lot of stuff and, and I don't particularly see that slowing down anytime soon. So, just keep doing our thing.
And, and we met, we met three times in June, by the way. Seen a lot of your faces.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, we did, we met, met three times in June. And then, and one of those meetings was supposed to just be for one item and it ended up being like nine. Yeah, so, it's good. We're still doing the same thing we did before, we just have different backdrops.
Yes, yeah. Okay, so...
I'm just, oh, I'm sorry, just quick, Al, do you want to talk about the strategic plan?
Oh, yes, yeah, see, see, we got so much going on. Yeah, there was actually supposed to be twenty items on the agenda tonight. Back in March, we brought forth the strategic plan, oh, Bill just changed his background. We brought forth that I know about the strategic plan and obviously that all went sideways with everything that is going on. But we've had time to kind of settle into this, I don't, I don't like using the word new normal because it, it doesn't, it's never gonna feel normal. Uh, but we've kind of settled into this new routine and, uh, feel like, you know, the strategic plan, the reasons that we wanted to bring the strategic plan forward have not gone away. And in some ways, they've kind of been heightened as we're gonna face some pretty tough budget decisions this November with what we hear coming out of Madison. It's gonna be, there's gonna be more challenges than, than there has been in years past, although Milton is still growing and that new construction is still gonna help us. Uh, they're talking about some pretty substantial cuts to, uh, local municipalities. Uh, so the strategic plan still, uh, is, is an important, it's, you know, it was important before, it's maybe even more important now. So we still want to move forward with that exercise, but understand it's really difficult in this environment. Uh, so what Inga has done is she's put together kind of a truncated version of a, of the strategic plan. Well, it's a new schedule, it doesn't really cut out any of the steps of the process, but takes into consideration the environment that we're in right now, recognizing that if we move forward with it, the vast majority, if not all of the meetings are gonna be like this right here. Um, so there certainly are some detractions from that and I don't want the product to be diminished because of this, but I think what we've shown is our resiliency and the ability to adapt, we can do it. And, you know, I, I want everybody to kind of have the same understanding when we go into the budget, especially us for staff. You know, if we're looking at two hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts, what, what's, what's, you know, what's the sacred cow and what's not? So, so Inga has got that set up, she can probably send that out to everybody to take a look at.
Yep, it's, it's just the updated project charter and work plan timeline, so I'll send that out to everybody.
Yeah, so if, once she sends that out, if folks can take a look at it and if any of those dates or things jump out at you or you just say to yourself, you know what, I don't think this is the right time to do it. We can put it on another council agenda or just, or just give me your feedback. I mean, I've talked to many of you on a fairly regular basis, if you, if you've kind of got some thoughts and you want to just bounce them off, I'm fine with that too, so she'll send that out. I don't dare to.
Yeah, so the...
I just wanted to, I wanted to kind of reset that because we haven't talked about it in so long. So when you get that email, you're like, wait, what, what is this again? I don't remember this, so.
So the, the first thing on the, on the schedule would be for the next meeting for us to talk about mission, vision, and values. So, there's this handy book. Can, is it backwards? Planning for the future, or planning the future, and there's a, a short chapter on mission, vision, and values. So I'll scan that into and just send that to everyone, so if you want to take a look at that, then we can kind of all be on the same page for that discussion.
And I would even say that while we're doing our strategic planning, which I, I really believe it's important that we do it, uh, we just work through, you know, the new environment we're in, like, we would not necessarily have to do team building if we're gonna do all this team building during strategic planning, like...
I'm with you.
And, and if anyone has ideas for, um, because since we're going to a virtual format, ideas for virtual exercises that we can do with the community during community meetings, let me know and we can look at how we can incorporate those.
Yep. So, um, and we're gonna do, have a little community, uh, meeting tomorrow at six o'clock. Community circle conversation where we watch a video, um, and we have a discussion on the history of, uh, white culture. So, we're gonna practice having those, uh, community meetings tomorrow. So I'll, I'll go first, oh, see how that goes. And thank you, Inga, for all your help and, and everything, so that's going on tomorrow. And, it's, you know, it's not like me to send out the question ahead of time, but I did give you nine minutes to look at a, an idea before council meeting started.
I didn't look.
And I'm sorry, I forgot, I, I had like this idea like a week ago and I forgot to email it out, but, so it was for team building. What gives you hope?
I can go first.
Nobody gets to say Ryan's new baby.
I'll, I'll go first. Oh, you kind of stole mine. This, right here. This gives me hope, it also gives me gray hair, it also gives me sleepless nights, but this gives me hope.
Nice, and it's bringing your pet and kid to city council meeting day today. Anybody else want to go?
That was mine, my kids.
Where are they? We don't even, do you even have kids? I've never seen a kid crawl on your lap.
If they show up down here, it'll just be a tornado.
Okay. Anybody else, Larry?
Faith in people, faith that, um, that people can change if they're given the right information and given the right opportunity. Faith in, um, government, that it can get better. And faith in my, my own self, that I can learn to adjust and adapt and be humble.
Thank you, Larry, I appreciate that. Anybody else? Teresa?
Uh, just discussions that, um, I have had, um, on Facebook with a variety of people. People that I don't know, some that I do know, that have talked a great deal about, their perception of racism and how they feel that perhaps they haven't dealt with it appropriately or openly and how this has forced them to, to learn and to grow and, um, and how much more they have to learn and grow. And I, I think that I have, uh, it's given me hope that, that I will learn a great deal from, uh, talking about it and listening and, um, and that I do need to learn, and I think I talked about this before too, uh, but I, it just is on my mind a lot, so.
Thank you, thank you. Who else?
I was gonna say, uh, kids before Al grabbed one and I haven't got one to grab to, uh, to put up here, but, um, one of the things that I've been trying to do with the whole COVID stuff is do something productive. And, you know, so I've been doing a lot of project kind of stuff. Uh, what is it that, um, uh, that I've meant to do for a long time that hasn't gotten done? And it's included everything from cleaning out the junk drawer, uh, to some more significant kinds of things. And the latest thing that I've been spending a lot of time on is digitizing old photographs. You know, I've got probably the last ten years of digital photographs, but before that, uh, we have a whole trunk in the living room that's been full of these things. And so, uh, literally over the last couple of weeks, I've digitized probably, I don't know, two thousand, twenty-five hundred photos and started sorting them, sorting them into, you know, folders and, and so on so that they can be found. The reason that I bring that up is, um, it's, it's those interactions Larry talked about, um, you know, the importance of people, um, and seeing some of those faces. Some of them are still here and some of them aren't, uh, but people who've meant a lot, uh, to you. And, uh, some of them are family, some of them are friends, some of them are family and friends departed. But, um, they're all part of what you are. And, um, uh, kind of, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of thankful to have those remembrances.
Thank you, Bill, you give me hope. You give me hope that someday I will do that. That's really cool. Who else?
I'll go. Um, so the future of the library is unknown, I have no idea what it's gonna look like a year from now, two years from now, but I have, my staff definitely gives me hope. We're already talking about what we can do to change things, what we can do in the months to come. So I know whatever happens the next year or so, hopefully my whole staff stays. Um, we'll get through it and we'll be amazing like always, so, my staff is amazing.
Thank you, Ashley.
Oh, mine is probably similar to Al's, it's all the kids and grandkids are good little individual monsters that they are, but also that, uh, with all the technology and things, things are, people are still trying to make things better.
Thanks. Mark? Oh, oh, Mark is not gonna be last.
Right. Well, I don't want to get in a rut here. Well, mine is not as serious as everybody else's, so, um, and first of all, I have to comment that with Bill's new background, all I can see is Gandalf there in the, in his picture frame there. What gives me hope, because I, I actually did read your email, uh, is just something as simple as, as the, uh, baseball major league season starting up. It's, you know, it's just, uh, it's something that's been a part of our culture for a long time and something that we, another thing that we've just taken for granted and don't realize, you know, how much we miss it until it isn't there, so, just another little sign that, that despite all of this serious things happening, yeah, gummies, yeah, that starts out at the Cubs, uh, so, that's what gives me hope, that things like that are still, uh, in our imagination and, and we're still moving forward with it.
Thank you, thank you for taking Dan's.
Alright, I still have the prop. No, um, some of it also goes back to, um, the extended family that we have at, that I'm blessed to have gotten to know at Wrigley Field over the last twenty years of going there. I'm blessed to have gotten to know at Wrigley Field over the last 20 years of going there on a regular basis and not seeing them and for a really long time. When we depart in September or October, um, it's always see you in April or March, and well, here we are in July, and that still doesn't happen. And I have hope that I'll get inside Wrigley Field yet this year.
Nice, thank you.
So, um, for me, obviously, children, but that's already been said. So I'm going to go with, um, people who are willing to put themselves, um, I don't know, outside of their comfort zone. So people who are willing to have those, um, difficult conversations that we need to have in, in the world today. And, um, people who are willing to think outside the box to make something work, and just people who have never used Zoom before and um, are, are trying it for the first time. I'm, that gives me hope that we're going to, you know, get through this and figure it out.
Thank you, me too. So Linda?
Okay, I, everybody has said the children. Um, my children and my grandchildren give me hope. Um, they each are in a different location and a different place in their lives and their families. And I see them as they persevere and try to do the best that they can for their families and for each other. Um, and that gives me hope. But I have to, I just have to mention to everybody, I have this really cool new, per, new annual flower this year that I have never had before, and I'll tell you, one of the most joyful things that I start my day with is when I go outside and the sun is shining, the flower is open. If I go out there right now and it's almost time for me to go to bed, the flower is closed. It's kind of like the start and the end of the day and a new day for tomorrow. And I just love it.
Thank you, Linda. Devin, Devin, did we hear from you?
No. Um, I, I'm just gonna say, uh, the strength of our community, um, still fighting to get through all of this. Um, it's, it's really admirable. That gives me hope.
When I was thinking of this, I was like, I, this is, this has been very hard. It's been very, very difficult. And, um, and I was thinking about different things that gave me, that gave me hope, and I was like, oh, I want to do this with the council, and you all give me hope. Uh, Bill's background gives me the most hope. But, um, you give me hope, and everybody else that shows up for a Zoom meeting that, you know, has never used Zoom before, and they talk about chickens and bees and, and and even though the, you know, sometimes, you know, it's, it's, it's a long meeting, but, um, you know, I watched Hamilton. I went to see Hamilton live and I watched it, and it just, it gave me so much hope for us going forward, even though it's hard, we have each other. And people really are trying. As much as people frustrate me, there's so many more people that are trying. And so I just appreciate all of you, and, um, I really needed to hear all of that hope. And I hope some people watching us heard that, too. So you guys are awesome, and I need to figure out the background thing, like, I need to be cool, too. So having said that, our next meeting is July 21st, 2020. Is there a motion to adjourn? Hi, Al! It's so good to see you. The motion to adjourn?
Yeah. So move.
Second.
Is that a second? Okay, so when we do, uh, team building, I'm eating people the whole time.
May I make the suggestion to, to Bill if I could? We'll figure out how to share that background with Dan. I think he really wants it.
Well, I think we all should have that background.
Yes.
I, I don't know if there was an official vote taken on the adjournment.
We're just, we, you know, all night long. You know, I have to walk home. So I still have to walk home. All those in favor of adjourning? That motion carries. We are adjourned.